All right, good morning, everyone. Oh, today's Tuesday, September 22nd. This month is flying by. The time is 9:00 a.m., aren't we recording? Can't see you. You're hiding behind the big chair.
You're on the record.
Okay, now we're on the record. Good morning, everyone. It's Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020, and the time is 9:00 a.m. The Board of Ada County Commissioners is in session for our open business meeting. We have all three commissioners with us. In addition, in the room, we have-
Bob Batista, Idaho. Bruce Criscoll, operations.
And it looks like online, we have on Bridge, we have Richard Beck, we have Leal Hansen, Christian Anderson, Amon Taylor, Craig Durrell, Antonio Sariyo, Dina Chase, yay! We have Bob McQuade, we have Chris Palmer, Timothy Klein, Bob Perkins, Don Burns, Sarah Roberts, Shara, sorry, Shara Roberts, and Sean Rain. Did I miss anyone? All right. Any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, there are not.
All right, great. We're gonna start out, then, with something really fun, and that is a celebration, a recognition of Dina Chase's 20 years of service to Ada County. Congratulations, Dana.
Thank you.
You've survived.
Thank you very much.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
That's great. Commissioner Laciando, do you want to go ahead and read what was given to us, or would you like me to? You're muted. It's a little cumbersome this way, Dana. Takes a little bit longer.
I understand. We've done that here.
Commissioner Laciando is actually unmuted, but we still don't hear her.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read it. You're flying, not only, not blind, but, yeah, no audio. All right, so Dina Chase started as an intern for juvenile court services until she was hired in May of 2005. Dina was initially hired as a court investigator and later voluntarily moved to positions in the West Ada CUNA Outreach Offices and Sex Crimes Unit. Dina was promoted to supervisor position and was a supervisor of the West Ada office for many years. Dina is currently the supervisor over the Boise Field Probation Unit. Dina has a wealth of knowledge and experience and is vital, is a vital and valued member of their probation division. So 20 full years. Dina, you were hired initially as an intern, but did you go to a local college here?
Yes, I went to Boise State and my degree's in criminal justice, and I was always interested in juveniles and criminal justice, so I thought this would be a perfect mix. So I started as an intern with our diversion team and just really decided I loved it and decided that that's what I wanted to make career as.
So 20, and here you are 20 years later.
Yep, flew by.
Well, that's a good sign. When things fly by, it means that you're doing the right thing in life, so really appreciate your work this field, as we know, is, can be very challenging, and it takes dedicated and committed and passionate people like you to really make it work and make our community a better place. So I'm sure, Don, Director Burns, would like to say a few words. Good morning, Don.
Good morning, Dina, welcome. What a pleasure to be able to-
Thank you.
You're welcome. What a pleasure to be able to honor you for your 20 years of dedicated service. Commissioners, I'd like to hand it over to Chris Palmer, who is Dina's supervisor, because he knows her very well.
And, Don, it looks like we're wearing the matching earrings today.
Yes.
Yes, that's the new style. Chris, go ahead. Morning.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's kind of hard to sum up 20 years. Dina is probably one of the last people that remember when I had hair, so I've got to keep her around to verify that I did have long, lovely locks at one time. She has been an awesome member of our team. To be in any position for over 20 years, you really have to look at, you know, a person's fortitude and their dedication to what they do. And Dina has shown that time and time again through her willingness to do what the agency needs and to move into positions that have challenged her but have also been ones where we've needed her to go in and help develop and create them. So I wish I had more like Dina. She's been an awesome, awesome asset to our department and to our division.
Thank you, Chris, for those lovely words. Go ahead, Dina. Want to say something?
I was just gonna say, thank you, Chris. Yep, we've worked together a long time. I'm not sure if it was luxurious and long, but I do remember the hair, yes.
I remember it differently, but that's okay.
We can tell you guys have a special relationship. Thank you again, Dina. Let's see if we've got Commissioner Laciando working now. Is your audio working, Commissioner?
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you now, yay. Would you like to say a few words to Dina before we move on?
Well, just appreciate your work so very much, you guys. You know, it's often unseen, right, except for your being kind of in the trenches, and we know how hard you all work to keep kids and families moving forward, and really appreciate you, and especially the time that you've given to Ada County. It's really testimony to the department and to you. So thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Is Commissioner Malloy with us? It looks like he dropped off.
No, I'm here.
Okay, we don't see you. Oh, there, okay. Would you like to say a few words to Dina before we move on?
And Dana, I don't know you personally, but it is very nice to know that your commitment, you know, your years of dedication, but it's also nice to know that you were able to come aboard and try something as an internship and have it turn into something that you were, you know, continued to be passionate about and stayed with as a career. So that's a great testimony to the quality and to the process of interning somewhere and discovering something that is a lifelong passion you've obviously had.
Thanks. Yeah, we have a great department here. Been blessed.
And Ada County, people of Ada County community are very blessed as well. Thank you again, Dina. Yay, all right.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye, guys, thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead, then, and I'm gonna need a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
Madam Chair, I move to remove unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. So first, I'm gonna need a motion for the agreements. Is there any discussion on any agreements before the board this morning?
No, I think we got all our information, finally, on the ones that were tabled for particular reasons.
Yep, I think we did. Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain-
I agree. Madam Chair, I move to approve the nine agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Next up, new business. I'm gonna open the public hearing. This is on Resolution 2558 for solicitor procurement for procedural professional services contract. I believe this is the contract for the help desk, and with Harissa and IT being stretched, meaning Omera being stretched, this seems to be the best way to go. Is there anyone that would like to say a few words on this? Perhaps Bob Perkins or Steve Omera?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Antonio Sariyo here.
Oh, I-
I'd like to say, yeah, I appreciate your consideration on this project. Yes, you are absolutely right. Our resources are stretched and this help us with the volume of calls, and it assists our 24/7 agencies with support. So even when IT's not here, they have a place to call and get assistance.
Any questions for Antonio? Anyone else care to testify?
Well, I think-
Just one of your comments? Okay, hearing now, we'll go ahead and close the public meeting, open it up for discussion amongst the board or a motion.
I think, in lieu of trying to keep staff on 24/7 to answer these questions, this is the right way to ensure that people can work around the clock according to their schedules as needed.
Okay. Care to make the note?
Madam Chair, I move to approve Resolution Number 2558 as listed on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Next up, operations. Looks like we have a change order. We have Bruce in the room with us. A decrease.
A decrease.
Yes, we like that.
Yes, yes, we're buttoning up the access control project, and I appreciate everybody's understanding and cooperation during this. It wasn't easy. We had some snap boos that we had to work through, as we always do on these complicated projects, and like to give a shout out to Antonio and his group for the assistance that they gave us during all this project, and we're just buttoning up the financials. And this change order is the first step into closing the project out.
Yay. Good work, all of you, yeah.
And the third of change order was for contingency items not required during the project.
Okay, so it was for contingency items not required during the project, a decrease of $1,222.37. Perfect, okay. Questions or a motion?
We just always like it when this comes with decreases. We appreciate it very much.
Care to make the motion?
Absolutely. Madam Chair, I move to-
Sure, Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. I move to approve change order number one as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, we'll need a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
Second. Aye.
Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Diana, something's wrong with your audio, it's funny. So anything else from operations this morning, Bruce?
Negative, we are good, Madam Chair.
Thank you, appreciate all you do.
Do I sound like a chipmunk again?
You just, you know, it just coming around twice, so that's okay.
Okay.
We'll take the extra motions and extra seconds. All right, I'll need a motion for the licenses, and this is to approve and ratify the licenses, the ratifications, and this is A, B, and C. This is not the new one. So-
Madam Chair, before we make a motion on this, I see we have Clerk McGrane, I see we also have Craig Durrell, and I just want to ensure that the public knows what the process is for ensuring that these events are, I guess you'd call COVID compliant. Either Phil or Craig, would you be ready and willing to speak to that?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You want to go, Phil, or do you want me to go?
Yeah, go ahead, Craig. I'll let you go, and then I can talk on our side.
Yeah, no, currently, I mean, the Sheriff's Office is recommending the catering permits that are coming in as long as they are less than 50 guests. We have to be, obviously, in stage three or four in the Idaho Rebounds Program. And then additionally, we're asking that all events meet all of the current and applicable CDH and CDC guidelines, and also meet the Ada County Health Order with respect to masks when social distancing can't be accomplished. And all of that is being worded in the permit applications. And I would note that the Clerk's Office is doing a good job now where people are actually submitting their social distancing guidelines and plans with their application, so that's helping move the process along.
Thank you. Any questions for Craig? Anything you'd like to add, Phil?
Nope.
Okay, I'll go ahead, then, and entertain a motion.
I want to thank you. I just want to thank you, Craig, and I think it's important to note where, you know, when people see this on the agenda, to note that we're following the rules, and people can still have their social gatherings, they just do it in a responsible way. So I'm happy to make this motion. Madam Chair, I move to approve and ratify the licenses as listed on the agenda, including three catering permits, two new licenses, and two license transfers, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. So next up, we have a new catering permit, and this is Hyde House, and this is the Sheriff's Office is recommending denial on this. I believe this was polled. Do we have Jason with us or Richard to speak to this?
This is Richard, I'm ready to-
Yeah.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, as far as background goes, we have essentially two different approvals that we typically look at for these type of events. They've got, obviously, the catering permit, goes through the Sheriff's Office, it's governed by state code, but for the events themselves, those are governed by the Ada County zoning ordinance. In the past, we had a lot of folks go through the process to get their catering permit, only to find out that they never got their approval for the actual event itself. And so in the past, we started coordinating with the Sheriff's Office to make sure that we could let people know early on that they needed these zoning approvals in addition to the catering permit. And in this case, this particular applicant has come in, I think, the past several years, and talked to our department and is aware of the need for zoning approval. So we've definitely had conversations with them in the past about what the requirements were, so.
Okay, and they failed to get the planning and zoning permit for the venue, correct?
Madam Chair, that's correct, yeah. They indicated they were gonna go ahead and use a different location for this event.
Okay. All right, Craig, would you like to add anything from the Sheriff's Office?
Nope, just, I mean, we did not recommend this particular request simply because it did not meet the requirements to hold an event upon the recommendation from Development Services. So it sounds like they, like, they pulled that, and they're gonna be holding their event at a different location, so I think we're, I think we're good. And then that particular location knows what they need to do to come into compliance to be able to hold events in the future, so.
Okay, so even though this was polled, do you want us to go ahead and deny it on the record? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anyone here, is there anyone here from the Hyde House that wishes to testify? Is Rebecca calling in, or no? Okay. Commissioner Malloy?
So I guess I have, I've had some questions. I did reach out to Mark Perfect on this a little bit. I guess I'm a little confused on this. I understand that this is a catering submission for catering, so I'm assuming that means the sale of food and/or alcohol, or at least the preparation of food and/or alcohol. I guess my question is, what constitutes an event as opposed to somebody simply using their private property to have catering that requires a permit? Is it, is it the sale of tickets? Is it the sale of these items that are being prepared? What is it that triggers an event as opposed to someone just having a large backyard and needing a catering permit?
Okay, Richard?
Madam Chair. No.
Oh, go ahead, Phil.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is Phil. So the catering permits come from our office, they have to do with the issuance of alcohol, right? So this is part of alcohol regulation, so the distinction is someone having an event at their house and, you know, having a cooler full of beer, that this, there's no need for permits. It's when there is the sale of alcohol, whether that's the event host having it and you have someone serving alcohol because alcohol is restricted and the consumption of alcohol, that's where the catering permit fits. It's specifically for the distribution of alcohol that permits are required.
So then, when, in every case, my question, I guess, then, is, in every case, if they're serving alcohol, that some caterer is serving alcohol, are they required both to have a catering permit and an event permit?
I can only-
Or can I simply hire a caterer to serve alcohol in my backyard, you know, or on my large area of land?
Richard, you want to take this or Phil? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll start with our half. So on the catering permit, if you want to hire a caterer to serve, you're not getting a permit. The caterer, the alcohol license holder, so they must first have an alcohol license to be a caterer, and then to use that license on the one-time events, because the license itself is attached to wherever they're regular, you know, if it's like the curb, who's a regular one we see all the time, their license is associated with their restaurant. For them to go out and serve alcohol at a different venue, they need a temporary permit, which is what the catering permit is. Otherwise, they risk losing their alcohol license in its entirety. So that's what we're talking about here. The event piece, I'll defer to Development Services, which is different than that catering permit, which is just alcohol-related.
So, Richard?
Yes, so for the event piece, you know, primarily, if someone is going to have some kind of transaction where, you know, they're, they're letting somebody use their property for a fee or for a business, that kicks in the event piece.
Okay. So I understand how this is tied together now. Initially, I thought this was an individual who owned land and simply wanted to have a caterer come and serve food and/or alcohol. So it's more than that. They're selling this food and alcohol, or someone is renting this land to put this event on. Okay, that clears it up for me, thank you.
Care to make the motion?
Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to clarify, so if they had a caterer to just providing food, there is no regulation, anyone can do that. This is specific for alcohol license holders' distribution of alcohol, is where the, I know the term catering permit sounds more broad, but it's just for license holders distributing alcohol.
Okay.
Okay. All right, you care to make the motion? Commissioner Malloy?
Yeah, I do. Madam Chair, I move to deny the catering permit for Hyde House as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Next up, Clerk's Office. Thank you for the lovely tour yesterday, Phil. Appreciate that. That was, that was very interesting and eye-opening, and we got to see Bessie, the newest addition to the team over there. So again, thank you for that. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, for, and all of you, for coming out and taking a tour of the elections and getting to kind of see what we've got going on. On note, today is National Voter Registration Day. We have our Digital Town Hall with KTVB this afternoon during the noon hour, and so we'll be trying, they've had a flood of questions from viewers, and so we're gonna do our best to answer as many questions as possible about the election. And I encourage everybody to register to vote today or update your registration. If you've moved or anything changes, today is a great day to update their registration. We anticipate seeing a flood of registrations as a result of the day today. I know Google, Facebook, many other online platforms are pushing registration today as well, and all in support of National Voter Registration Day. So it's a good day, and especially leading into an election with so much attention, it's a great thing. And so thank you, guys, for coming out. And as I mentioned to you yesterday, the election is effectively underway now. The very first ballots were mailed on Friday to military and overseas members, so voting is now taking place. It'll be September 30th when we mail the local ones, so around October 5th is when voters should expect to see those first ballots. So a lot going on in the election, but you guys are well aware of that. Also this morning, Madam Chair, though, I want to circle back from last meeting. On the line with us is Christian Anderson from Zion's Bank. Kathleen and I were able to meet with Christian and Amon on Friday just to discuss the financing for the coroner's facility. And just like Christian presented last week, we walked through and shared information for him on our financial position and what we think would be best. So one of the things is, I think it's best that we shoot for the 30-year term, just giving us the most time. We can leverage that, I think, based on that, you guys had kind of indicated the middle of the road position, and I think Christian can talk to this more with more specifics, that that does seem to fit well, because Kathleen agreed with Christian that our ability to potentially refinance at some point is something we want to hold on to, because there is a definite, there are good reasons we may need to refinance in 10, 15 years, and we want to reserve that option. And so I think that's where that piece. We don't, unlike what we did with the courthouse bond, we don't anticipate paying these off early and calling them, just based on all the needs we have with the master's facility plan and other things. It would be diverting money away from those other projects in order to do so. And so we think we'll have a more, you know, broad approach in terms of our financing moving forward. And so I do have Christian here with us, and so, Christian, I don't know if you want to add to that conversation to make sure you've got the direction you need before the issuance.
Thank you, Phil. Morning, Christian.
Morning. Yeah, Madam Chair, I think Phil described it well. Really, the, you know, there's, I would say, kind of a thousand ways to skin the cat, kind of, on how exactly we finalize this pricing. It's more of a question of kind of what direction do we want to focus, and rather than the destination, what lane does the county want to be in? And so as Phil said, we can focus on maximizing the ability to make prepayments, or we can be on the opposite end of that spectrum, and my recommendation was a middle ground approach, and in discussions with Phil and Kathleen, they agreed. And given what they told me as far as their expectations for the county's ability to prepay, and of course, future project needs, and also maintaining flexibility to refinance and restructure down the road, that I still hold that same recommendation. So exactly what that will look like at pricing, of course, will depend on what we get from investors, but at least that tells us where we want our focus to be.
Thank you. Was Jess also a part of those conversations, Phil?
Madam Chair, no, this was just us on the finance side in terms of things, but this should, in addition to addressing, this will give the most flexibility to operations as we look at the other master facility plans. So that was, that was a driver on our, and is looking at how do we address the other things, so I think it will fit his needs.
So questions, additional questions from commissioners at this time?
I don't think anything at this time.
I know Patrick, Patrick, you were leaning towards middle, taking the middle position as well. Are you still there?
Well, ideally, but again, I understand with, you know, all the other things the county's attempting to do, that that, that may or may not be as feasible. So, I mean, that would have been, in an ideal situation, sure, I'm always one to, you know, pay things off quicker if possible, but I also trust those that are, the others that are involved in this decision-making process and investigating this, and will, you know, consider all their good advice.
Commissioner Laciando?
If that's what Christian's recommending, and Phil and Kathleen concur, then go forth. Christian, I also want your exercise equipment back there. We're gonna see you running while you secure good pricing for us.
It's not adjusted to my height, if, from what that's worth.
So you don't need a motion on this, just a thumbs up that that's the direction we're going? Okay.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
All right, you've got it. Thank you, Christian.
Thank you.
Anything else from your office today, Phil?
Nope, that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thanks again for the tour. Appreciate that. Okay, Claims Journal, need a motion. Commissioner Malloy?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize payments of the claims on the Claims Journal dated September 18th, 2020.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Next up, Assessors' Office. Morning, Mr. McQuade. There you are, Bob. Hard to find somebody squares up there. Hi.
Madam Chair, we skipped our personnel action forms.
Oh, personnel action forms, sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Malloy.
Sure. Madam Chair, I move to approve the personnel action forms as listed on the agenda, including two conditional pay increases, four introductory period pay completions, eight leaves with pay, six longevity increase, Sheriff's Pay Plan, two miscellaneous, one post-certification increase, five promotions, three reclassifications, three salary increases, and five step increases pay plan, and that the summary sheet remain in the, on file in the Commissioner's office.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Now it's your turn, Bob. Good morning.
All right, good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Some things I want to share with you, probably the most important. Today is the Autumnal Equinox. 7:30 this morning, the sun was halfway in its journey to the, to the winter solstice. That's always so important to me. It's just a nice way to keep track of what's going on in life and in the world. A few other things that, not as much significant as that, of course. Beth and I are going to be doing a presentation to ARC tomorrow at 1:00. It's called Understanding of Property Taxes. We've been working on it for a few weeks, and I think it's gonna be really a, very beneficial to the seniors, and that's who will really gear this presentation to, an hour and a half presentation. BTA, we have our first hearing that's coming Thursday at 9:00 in the morning. Um, BTA, we have our first hearing that's coming Thursday at 9 o'clock in the morning. We'll see how that goes. It's not done differently this year. The hearings will be telephonically. We're not going to be going over to the Board of Tax Appeals. Two other things I think are really important, of course, we have that property tax, that interim committee that had a hearing on Friday. That's, um, to me, it's really, um, very less a trouble on a couple of fronts. Number one, um, it shows that some people have, don't have a real grasp of some, I think, of the important fundamentals of our property tax system. But yet I'm really surprised how some people have a very good understanding of the property tax system. And who knows where it's going to end up? We'll just have to wait and see what, what happens. The last thing I want to mention to you this morning is those motor vehicles, on October 13th, we are rolling out the new motor vehicle software with the Transportation Department. They are very convinced that it's ready to go. My staff says that it's ready to go. It will just have to keep our fingers crossed. We know how things unfolded out at, uh, the driver's license a couple of years ago. And the last thing is, is Transportation Department is looking at changing the model for delivery of motor vehicles services. Uh, they're going to be, right now, there's talk about centralizing at the, uh, at IGD a lot of the work, which goes on, that would be done over a period of a couple of years. And it would mean a substantial, um, reduction in staff at all of the assessors' offices if they go through the way it appears that it's going to be right now. We really support what they're doing. It's, uh, we support anything that's going to make it easier and less expensive for the, um, people trying to get their vehicles registered. That, again, will probably take two to three years before that is completely implemented and I'm sure there'll be, uh, the dynamic will change quite a bit and what the final product looks like is anybody's guess, but we just know that in the future, uh, the way services are delivered for motor vehicles will be very different than it is today. Madam Chairman, that's everything from the Assessors' Office.
Great, thank you. Questions? Commissioner Lachando?
I guess, uh, it is a question, but also a comment, Bob. Um, I'm sure you followed along to the property tax interim committee conversation last week and, um, the, some of the conversation was about, you know, to your point, kind of reducing some things that the county does, centralizing that estate or, or privatizing. And I guess, you know, I, I'm thinking back to your budget presentations and what a, really a slim percentage your budget represents as the, of the Ada County total. So I think it's going to be really important for you and all those they're talking about with some of these options to note that it's, um, in terms of actual real reduction to the property taxpayer, it wouldn't be that meaningful from my perspective. Maybe, am I on track there or what's your, what's your take?
Uh, Madam Chairman, Commissioner Lachando, is this the reduction in motor vehicles?
Whether it's motor vehicles, I mean, they, they talked about like maybe that should be privatized or, and as I think about what, what percentage your office represents in our total budget, it's, it's so minimal. I just don't see how, it could, it could be a good business proposition if that's where they go. I've just not seen that it's going to be some huge reduction to property taxpayers. So it's going to be important for us to communicate that.
Now, Madam Chairman, Commissioner Lachando, a couple of things. Uh, to the, directly to your, your comment, is motor vehicles is entirely, Ada County is entirely supported through the fee. And we have the lease fee in the, probably the lease fee in state were less than $3. Uh, if somebody else can do it less than that, more power to them. But not all counties are in that boat. Some of them have fees as high as $7 and they are also supported by property taxes. So I, I think that that is important. The second thing I just want to mention in relation to what you just said, Commissioner Lachando, is I'm reaching out to some of the people who testified at the committee on Friday. I've got, uh, I'm meeting with Russ Hendricks, fellow for, uh, Friday Morning, I believe it is, or we're going to go over some of the things that, that he had said. Also, Fred Bernbaum, he had said some things that I really don't, I, I think are not quite accurate and I want to sit down and, um, make sure that he's got the correct information. Also, what I want to do is reach out to the committee members and just see if there's any, uh, anything that I can offer, uh, by way of help in making their decision.
Thank you, Bob. So one of the things that, uh, that sparked conversation in that interim committee is the way commercial property, um, is being valued, assessed, um, and that it's not as, you know, clear-cut as it is with residential. So have you had conversations or do you intend to have more conversations with committee members around that?
Uh, Madam Chairman, this is something that, that I will certainly bring up, but commercial property is always valued, is almost always valued on the income approach. It's, that's the way investors look at buying a property and that is, would be the best way to do that. There's a lot going on, it just, and things are being said that it's just a whole hodge, hodge, hodge and it, it just really muddies the water. I, I think everyone is really over-complicating the whole issue of property taxes and the valuation issue. And if I just, just as an example of how, and people don't understand, uh, someone had made a comment that a parcel went up 40%, 40% in one year. Well, you need to just see what's, what's going on behind it. Uh, I could think of properties that went up 250% in one year. Uh, that would be if any parcel of land that was built upon and, uh, the home had a value to it. So you look at the one parcel, so you need to really have an understanding of each parcel, what's driving that increase.
Well, I was, I guess I was, um, a little bit concerned. I think it's the consultant that's working with them that suggested that we look at outsourcing and use the example of u- using Republic, um, Waste Services. Um, and in our, in our experience, we ended up saving, uh, $6 million over the term of one of the contracts and then bringing the push and pack in-house, we're going to save another $4 million over the term there. So we've saved approximately $10 million, um, by doing the, just the opposite actually and going out for the RFP, so.
Well, I think with each of these suggestions, a careful analysis, a cost-benefit analysis needs to be performed to see the best way to go and also bringing in some of the behavioral aspects of it as well as just the, the, the costs and the revenues being generated by it.
You're so right. Yep. Thank you so much. Anything else from your office today?
Uh, Madam Chairman, that's it.
Okay.
So good to see you. It's been a long time since I've seen you, Commissioner Kenyon, a long time.
Um, in person, I know, I know. I'll give you a call today on the other issue. We'll circle back with you.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Um, let's go ahead then and move on to the Treasurers' Office and it looks like, um, I don't see Beth Mon, but I think Tim's up there. Yeah, Tim Pine? Good morning.
I am. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. The Treasurers' Office does not have any, uh, updates this week.
Okay. Any questions for Tim or treasury questions in general? Oh, okay. Let's move on then. Thank you. Uh, let's move on to Billing Services and we have a trash exemption request. Account number 376425. This was an email request. Um, I think we have Shara Roberts on here that wants to maybe say a few words about this request before the board takes it into consideration.
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Wonderful. Um, in front of you for consideration is the trash exemption noted by the property owner. Account number 376425. The applicant is requesting exemption due to business travel-related reasons. Uh, the mandatory trash ordinance does allow for a customer to apply for an exemption due to extreme or unusual circumstances. Those examples include military service, institutionalization, or extended hospital admissions. If approved, the exemption is valid for one year and upon expiration, the customer needs to submit a new application. Based on this information, my recommendation would be to deny the request. Under the mandatory trash ordinance, this customer may continue to contact our office every 90 days to request an extension on his temporary vacancy stop, which better aligns with the reason stated on his application. That's all I'd have and I'd be happy to help answer any questions.
So Shara, is this property inhabitable or is it uninhabitable? That's the, that's the last of the requirements you mentioned. Extreme, due to extreme or unusual circumstances, military service, institutionalization, uh, extended hospitalization, and the fourth one is uninhabitable premises.
My understanding is this, uh, property is still inhabitable. I talked with the property owner on the phone. Um, it sounds like he was living at, um, his parents' house while they're in Thailand and, but I don't have, have any indication that it's an uninhabitable premise.
Okay. And he is getting a homeowner's exemption on this property, correct?
Correct, since 2015.
Okay. Commissioner Lachando? Commissioner Malloy, care to ask questions or comments?
It, it sounded, it sounded like you, uh, indicated that he is currently able to do this, what is it, 90 days at a time or something?
Correct.
Yes. Um, he, and I, I did provide that option to him and we've ac- actually, um, extended his temporary service stop on his account for the past two years.
Is there any limit to the, I mean, is there any limit to him being able to continue to renew that stop and assuming that there's no problems with trash being built up or reported by the neighbors, that that would continue to be granted?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Malloy, can you repeat that? It was cutting out.
Sure. Uh, with the assumption that there's no indication of trash being built up around the property or reported by the neighbors, is there a limit to the amount of time so he'll be able to extend that stop?
No, there's nothing in ordinance that, um, limits the amount of requests for temporary vacancy stop.
Okay. So it's, it sounds like he has a mechanism, it's just not a permanent or long-term mechanism. Okay. Thank you.
Sure. So, yeah, I'm reading the ordinance here.
You're welcome.
And I just don't see where he is, um, showing us that he, this is an extreme, uh, and unusual circumstances, uh, for any kind of financial hardship. The property is inhabitable. Um, he is not in military service, he's not institutionalized as mu- as far as we know or in the hospital. Um, so with that, I just don't see, personally, how, um, I can approve this. I would, I would deny it. Commissioner Lachando?
I concur. I, I understand maybe he would like a longer-term situation here, but I think this is more appropriate. So with that, uh, Madam Chair, I move to deny the trash exemption request listed on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion is second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye. I just have it. Motion carries. All right. Next up, I'll need a motion, Commissioner Malloy, for approval of the minutes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion is second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye. I just have it. Motion carries. Next up, Weed and Pest. Uh, Commissioner Lachando, care to make a motion on the release of liens?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve releases of lien for Weed and Pest as listed on the agenda and I'll advise the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye. I just have it. Motion carries. Next up, Juvenile Court Services Agreement number 1396, or 13936, and this is the operating plan for FY '21. Um, I assume, uh, my fellow commissioners have had an opportunity to read this agreement. Do either of you have any questions for, uh, Don Burns, Director Burns? She's with us on the bridge.
Don, if you wouldn't mind just kind of publicating a, just very briefly what this is?
Okay, Don.
Thank, thank you, Ms., Madam Chair. Um, yes, so the agreement, a lot of people don't realize that the statute actually puts responsibility for the...
Don, I'm going to pause you for a minute. If you're not speaking, please mute your microphones. We're getting a lot of feedback. Okay, that's better. Great. Okay, go ahead, Don. Now we can hear you, hopefully.
You bet. So a lot of people are not aware that the detention center, responsibility for the detention center actually falls under the court in statute. And so this agreement is an agreement between the county commissioners and the court to operate the detention center as well as to provide probation services for the court and, uh, also to provide, uh, in this particular agreement, uh, treatment services as well. So, uh, this, unlike many of the other departments, um, Ada County Juvenile Court Services provides services to the court and this is your agreement with the court to oversee those services.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Burns? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then. Thank you, Don.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Juvenile Court Services operation plan.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye. I just have it. Motion carries. Go forth and operate, Don. All right, thanks. Okay, next up, Expo Idaho. We have, uh, Bob Batista with us here today and, um, we have one interim event, Idaho Food Bank. Um, but Bob is here with us to talk a little bit about additional protocols that they're putting in place, um, as some of these larger events come online and, um, additional steps that he's going to be taking with his staff and whatnot. Bob, you want to go ahead and take your mask off? And I'll mask up so they can hear you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This Idaho Food Bank, we've done a couple times. This is where we hand out food via vehicles. It's a drive-through, um, and we were able to, uh, have them come back. It was kind of a short notice. I think they decided that they needed to do this again, but I'm bringing this forward to you. As far as the protocols, yes, we've been involved in making sure that people are getting their approvals through CDH. Uh, as far as their media buys goes, we're asking them to put all, uh, CDH and then CDC guidelines to practice social distancing where you can't wear a mask. And, um, so I think we're, we're on track to start doing some of these smaller events as we get going and getting ready. Uh, some of them that are coming up in the next couple of weeks are the flag football again for, uh, this coming Thursday and Friday along with the food distribution. There's a consignment sale that we received approval. They're in the Center Expo, the biggest building we have, and they're limiting their people to 50 people to be in the building at one time.
Okay. And can they, do they submit a plan to you?
Yes, we've seen their plan and the CDH plan, yeah.
And the CDH approved that?
Yep, they did.
Okay, great. Okay. And they know about their messaging?
Yes, they do.
Okay, super. Okay.
So that takes us kind of through the month and I'll be back next week and we'll talk some more about each event as we go through.
Okay. Hang tight because we're going to maybe have some questions on the addendum to the contract with the smoke evacuees.
Yep.
Coming up. Okay. Any questions regarding, um, this interim event or anything else and, and the additional protocols put in place by Bob's team?
Bob, I just, you know, I know that you're putting the onus on the event organizers to make sure those protocols are followed, but ultimately it, it will reflect on us as a county. So, um, you know, please make sure, I know you are carrying that message. And I know the, the, like the flag football one, for example, um, you know, hopefully they have a good plan in place to educate parents about what they need to do on the sidelines. So if you want to check in on that and get back to me, I'd appreciate it.
Definitely, Madam, uh, excuse me, Madam Chair and Commissioners, sorry about... We'll certainly do that, yeah. We've been, all of our staff is geared up. We keep going down, like through the, for the RV show this weekend. We went down there. I went down there every two hours and checked. The staff was down there checking and, uh, when you let them know that, they seem to fall in line a lot better. So we are going to continue to monitor these events.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, thank you, appreciate that, yeah. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Bob, from your side?
No, just thank you for your cooperation. Appreciate it a lot.
You bet. And then, we are putting out the applications for the volunteer positions for the committee.
Fair Board, yep.
Fair Board Committee.
Puts it out of Fair Board, against the Lido Board.
I think that's going out, if not?
And then we have a meeting coming up.
Yesterday, today, yeah. Okay, great. Alrighty, sounds good. So, let's move on then to agreements. And this first agreement is ratification.
Madam-
Uh huh, go ahead.
Madam Chair, we need to make the motion to approve the one interim event.
Yep, on the Food Bank, yep, go ahead.
Yes. Madam, I move to approve the one interim event agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. Okay, so now we'll move on to this agreement. This is a ratification. I signed this addendum early because it was sort of an emergent situation with the fires in Oregon, and folks were needing to evacuate, and they were showing up at, where else? Expo Idaho in the middle of the night. So, we ended up with quite a few of them needing safe haven. And so, Bob got on the phone, and we got this, the agreement, the addendum attached to it to make sure folks are, I think, paying an additional $5 surcharge, but they know it's just for seven days, seven days at a time. We didn't want to end up with any long-term concerns or issues with eviction notices or anything like that. So, it's been approved by legal, and again, I signed it early, so we need to ratify it today. But Bob's here to kind of catch us up to see if, if that's waxing or waning. Do we have more people, less people? What are we seeing out there, Bob?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, we have been kind of having a steady flow of about five or six on a day. We're also noticing some people now coming from the Twin Falls area that are having to evacuate out there, moving this direction. It's not been as robust as we probably thought it was going to be, but it has lended itself to helping families between probably eight to 10 a day.
Wow, okay.
So, this agree, this amendment that you signed, I have another agreement coming for the RV park, which takes us into next year, and then this will continue through the month of October, and then we'll see where this goes.
Okay, all right. So, are they sort of communicating amongst themselves? I know that, that there's an association, the RV folks, so they're able to kind of let people know where they can seek safe haven, like our place?
Yes, that's correct. Our operator has two places. He runs our, our facility and then the KOA up in Meridian, but he knows Ambassador and those several other ones around here. And so, collectively, we're all trying to take care of people. Our site happens to be the one with the extra overflow.
Okay. Are you finding that those folks need any additional help, resources, you know, anything?
I haven't heard of anything yet. They, they're just pretty ecstatic that they found a place to sit there and unhook their camper for a couple of days. And so, I know that our RV park operators are doing everything they can to give them resources or lend them assistance in whatever area they think that they can help them with.
Okay. I know Joe Lombardo has contacted them as well, and so, I think we're, we're good to go. So, again, thank you for extending Expo to-
Oh, I'm more than happy to help. Thank you so much for your cooperation.
Anything and everything, right?
Well, right. We're going to probably be having a tour with United Way today.
Oh, okay, okay, great. All right, any questions for Bob? All right, then, I'll go ahead.
Thanks, Bob.
Commissioner?
Madam Chair, I move to approve and ratify the one agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, that's a ratification, all right. So, we have a motion to second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. Next up, new agreements. Commissioner Malloy?
Yeah, I thought the, the budget BOE was going to be the toughest part of this job. Possibly keeping track of all the agreement renewals and new renewals as we approach the end of the fiscal year might be just as challenging. So, with that, unless Commissioner Lacheyondo has any comments.
Commissioner Lacheyondo?
I move to approve the 61 agreements as, as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. Any further discussion? Anyone? Going once, going twice?
Tomorrow is CU, tomorrow is National CU at the poll day for high schoolers. But with many campuses closed, I don't know if we'll have much participation in that event, but they can go out and pray at the poll before schooltime if they wish to.
Here we go. And with that, we'll go ahead and go into recess and get right back on
Hi.
Uh oh.
You're on the record?
All right, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 22nd, and the time is, yikes, it is 9:55. Florida County Commissioners is in session for our Emergency Medical Services District Meeting. We have all three Commissioners with us. Also in the room with us, we have-
Steve Rutherford.
And on bridge, we have Elizabeth Duncan, Antonio, Sariel, Sean Rain, and Bob Perkins. Any changes to this agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, they're not.
Okay, let's take up new business. Commissioner Lacheyondo, care to make a motion on the Claims Journal?
Hold on, I'm still getting that up.
I, I have it, Madam Chair. I, I moved to authorize payments on the Claims Journal as listed on, I moved to authorize payments of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated September 18th, 2020 regarding EMS expenditures.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. All right, next up, Commissioner Malloy, on the personal action forms.
I move to, I move to approve the personal action forms as listed on the agenda, including six salary increases and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. Next up, we have agreements. So, we have quite a few agreements here. It looks like eight in all. Do the Commissioners have any questions on any of the eight agreements?
No, fortunately, I had time to read the advice letters and reach out with any questions I've had, so I'm satisfied with all of them.
Okay, I have a quick question.
For Sean?
Yeah, for Sean, I have a quick question. So, on the collection agency, is this the last, did you say this is the last year that we are using this collection agency before that goes back out for RFP?
Madam Chair, this is actually, and I apologize, my camera's not working. I just found that out. This is actually our previous collection agency, and when we signed the contract with Wakefield Services, the attorneys felt that our old accounts that were still being collected by Bonneville still had to be collected by them, and thus, the agreement still exists with Bonneville.
Okay, yeah, I knew we were in transition there. Okay, great. All right, Sean, anything that you care to comment on any of these agreements?
Madam Chair, no.
All right, go ahead, Commissioner Malloy.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the eight agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. All right, Sean, anything, any news from your department? Anything you'd care to share with the board this morning?
Madam Chair, just a few things. We do have a few people out on isolation right now. We had a few members that tested positive for coronavirus. They're, they're doing okay, but we have seen a little bit of an uptick in that. The only other issue that is fairly pressing right now, and I'm not sure if the board is aware of it, is the determination of Percy to classify supervisory positions under the rule of 90. This can have, this is going to have a really negative impact on our department. So, I've actually postponed our deputy chief interviews until we have some finality on Percy's decision. I think I owe it to the people, the candidates that have applied to that position so that they would know whether or not they would remain on rule of 80 or, or rule of 90. So, I'm just still working through that issue.
Okay. Steve Rutherford wants to weigh in.
Sean, I asked, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Steve.
I just, I'm running down some information for Diana, and then I am also scheduled to talk to Heather later today, and we'll have this scheduled for PA on Thursday with Sean and Cassie in the room.
All right, great. And do we have anything in writing?
We do.
From Percy?
We do. Just, unfortunately, it's point is just emails, but, but it's enough to give us an idea of what they're thinking. But I don't see, I haven't seen anything kind of official, like, from a director, but we may have to push it to get something.
Yeah.
The thought will be, come to you with ideas about how we, how we approach the director.
All right, Commissioner Lacheyondo?
Well, I think it's probably not just the director. We may be thinking on a different level as well, but I have really deep concerns about our ability to attract and retain employees. Nobody's going to want to promote if, if this is the way this is going to go. So, it's, it's really concerning, and I think we're going to need your help, Sean, to kind of put that, you know, pen to paper in terms of outlining what this will mean for your people and your ability to attract and retain people. And as we've talked about all the time, one of the most important things in paramedics is getting people who have that experience over time. They've seen lots of different cases, and then having that move into leadership. So, yeah, we're just, we're going to need your help, but I, I know the full board will stand with you, but I'm, I'm ready to go full court press on this.
So, I'm really interested in hearing what their rationale is, and so, if you can make sure that you bring Percy's rationale to the table, to that legal, yeah, as much as we, you can garner with the emails and conversations you've had. All right, anything else?
Madam Chair, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Sean. You missed your face today.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I'm smiling. You got to trust me, I'm smiling.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Let's go ahead then, and we'll get off the record. We'll go into recess, and we'll get right back on for Avamoor Community Infrastructure District Meeting. You're off. All right, good morning, everyone. It's Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020, and the time is 9:05 AM, 9:03 AM. Florida County Commissioners is in session for our Avamoor Community Infrastructure District Number One meeting. We have all three Commissioners with us. Also in the room with us, we have-
Steve Rutherford.
And on bridge, we have Elizabeth Duncan and Bob Perkins. Welcome, everyone. Any changes to this agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, they're not.
All right then, let's go ahead and take up a motion, Commissioner Lacheyondo, for the Claims Journal, and under new business.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated September 18th, 2020 regarding Avamoor CID expenditures.
Need a second?
Second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. Next up, agreements, and this is Agreement 13948. And it looks like this agreement is for the clerk, the clerk's office to continue to use temporary staffing services in connection with the project manager for Avamoor. So, I don't know if you've had a chance to read this agreement, if you have any questions on this for Phil, or are we good to go?
Yeah. Now that you've refreshed my memory by telling me what it was for and all of reading up on it, so I'm, I'm good.
Yeah. Okay, Commissioner Lacheyondo?
Um, I don't think, do we still have Phil with us?
No.
No. I just, I know that Kathleen is keeping an accounting of all of our costs associated with administration, and I just want to make sure we're continuing to have the, that accurately reflect our, our true costs, that I can follow up with her.
Yeah, you can follow up with her. I did ask Meg Lutherman to put together that cost accounting for me, I was, gosh, almost a year ago now, and I don't believe that this was in there. And so, I think that it would be good for us to see how much we paid last year and what the anticipated amount would be this year. It's an hourly rate of $108.42, but there's, do we have any idea of what this amount was in full last year?
I don't, easy to get that, but no.
Do you want to table this, so we know? Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's good for us to have an idea of what that total amount is, and not just an hourly amount on here. And then some-
Well, and I think it'd be, it's good to have that conversation maybe more holistically to really understand that. So, is that something, Steve, that you can bug Kathleen about?
Yes.
And we'd actually maybe have her come and present to the, to the Avamoor CID Board, AKA us.
It looks like for the last three years, it's averaged anywhere from $7,500 up to $20,000 is the range that's on this contract, but it, it would be good to know kind of where we're at for last year. Okay, let's go ahead and table that. So, Annie, we're going to table-
Madam Chair, what was that, what was that agreement?
What's that? Patrick, go ahead.
No, you just gave me what I was going to ask for. 13948 is the agreement number.
Yeah, you want to go ahead?
Sure. Madam Chair, I move to table Agreement Number 13948 to Tuesday, September 29th, 2020.
No, hold on, we need another day.
Second.
October 1st to October 1st.
To October, okay. Madam Chair, I move to table Agreement Number 13948 to October 1st, 2020.
Okay, now, we have a second. We have a motion to second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, as have it, motion carries. Any further discussion on Avamoor? Nearing none, we're going to go into recess, and we'll get right back on in legal staff. Let's take a quick five-minute break, and we'll start up in five minutes with legal. Thank you, everybody.
You're off the record.